Good evening, this is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for a zoning commission special administrative work session on Wednesday, August 14th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. The quorum for this meeting is four. I will now call on the following elected commissioners. Zone one commissioner Linda Manos.
Here.
Zone two commissioner J.F. Ewald Joseph.
Yes.
Zone three commissioner, myself Harold Watson here. Zone four commissioner Deborah Lambert.
Here.
And zone five commissioner Len Petricelli. Alternates intended include Rich Fedett. We also welcome Jay Habansky, our planning and zoning administrator, Gail DeCilio, our recording secretary, Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel, and our special guest tonight, SLR's consultant, Robert Collins. Did I get that right? The public may only speak at the invitation of the chair during both administrative and public hearings. With that said, I call to order this special administrative session, the Stratford Zoning Commission, at 6:00 PM. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Jay and Richard.
Point of order.
Yes?
What is expected of the commissioners tonight.
That's what they're going to explain right now.
Okay.
So, good evening and thank you, everyone. So, tonight, we're going to be looking at the very first draft of the most significant changes to the zoning regulations. These were items, most of the changes, as I have explained to you all over the past year and a half, or year, most of the changes are stylistic changes, removing text that no longer applies legally, updating it and making our regulations consistent with the state statutes, as well as modernizing a lot of the uses and making the zoning regulations more understandable, more readable, more easier to interpret, not only for staff, but developers and residents. So, this evening, what we'd like to do is go through this booklet that we have here. You'll see a table of content after you turn the cover page that essentially lay out what we would like to have the commission go through item by item and help give us the guidance. We have made some proposals for you all to evaluate, and essentially, you all make the decision as to whether or not you want to make the change, or make the change with several caveats. If you're able to get to consensus on some of these items during work sessions, this is not going to be our only work session, we're going to have multiple of these. Some of these items can be a little complicated to get through. So, if you're able to get, you know, relatively immediate consensus on an item, then you all could, can vote to say, okay, Jay, Robert, you can take this off the list, we like, we like the regulation as you've proposed, put it into the new regs, and when we adopt the formal regulations and make them, and memorialize them, that version will be in there. You may decide, eh, we don't like what you have proposed, try again, or we don't like what you proposed, don't, don't try again, don't put it in the regulations. So, we're hoping that we get to some consensus on some of these items so that we can finalize them in the more final zoning regulations.
So, Jay, can you explain further, because I did get questions from the rest of the committee, what is the process that we are doing tonight? Is all of this going to come back to us as a document that's near completion, that we will then go back and do a final vote on individual items?
Yeah, and we're hoping for some guidance about that as well. I mean, you know, we're unsure as to what the commission feels most comfortable doing. Are we going to adopt, are we going to spend our work sessions reading line by line, every single word of every single chapter, and adopt these chapters one at a time? I would not recommend that, and, I mean, I feel like I know how you all work a little bit, and, you know, I think that we could adopt this, you know, do informal reviews, get consensus, and then either do, adopt half at a time, or the entire regulation set in one, in one full suit, once we've had our work sessions complete.
Can both of you differentiate in our discussions, what is actually existing that's been rewritten? If we have just plain text in here, is that coming out of existing regulations?
Yeah, why, can I maybe give some, yeah, let me just give a little bit of clarification too, from my perspective. First of all, it's a, it's a pleasure to be in front of you all tonight. It's been a couple months, quite a few months. We, as Jay has indicated, you know, we have been, ever since we came and talked with you last, which I think was in the wintertime, and we kind of reviewed the new format for the code, we have been working very, very closely with Jay and his team, as well as my team, to kind of come up with this, these new, the new format and, and the adjusted regulations. And I think, from my perspective, the biggest thing that we want you to get tonight is really to get familiar again with that format. And that, I'm going to start off after we finish this initial questions, and I'm just going to get you re-acquainted with the new format, the seven sections, so that you can kind of all get a good understanding of like, okay, what are the new seven sections? And then, what we're going to do is, we're going to go through seven very specific questions that are in, that are part of this document, and we're going to, because those are questions that, during the detailed review that Jay and his team and our team did, there were some things that we definitely decided that, oh, we really need to get some input from the community or from the zoning commission.
And by that, you mean the first seven questions here?
Yes, so we're going to go through those first seven questions, and that's just going to go right into like, very specific things without, after I talk about the, kind of the broad overview. And then, the last part of what we're going to do tonight is, we are going to get you re-acquainted with, because, again, we will eventually get to the point, as Jay mentioned, where we're going to go through and give you the full chapters. But for right now, we want to make it a little bit easier by giving you a preview. So, not only are we previewing again, or getting you acquainted with the seven sections, we're also going to go through a series of sections or subsections that changed pretty substantially, so that you're going to get a preview of those pretty substantial changes. And then, we're going to end by saying, okay, these are a series of new subsections that are completely new, or completely adjusted, so that we're giving you the, the most deep, the most, the most, I want to say detail, but it's the most items that are really changing. So that when you actually get the full sections, you'll be like, oh, I see, a lot of the codes change the same, oh, and then this is that one that they previewed before that changed substantially. Okay, so we're actually going to give you most of the difficult stuff tonight, so that you're aware of it, so that when you get the full sections, you'll be like, okay, we talked about this already. That's what we're hoping.
So, my assumption is, is that what we're getting particularly in the first seven, are, these are the complete section, including what still, what exists now that's not changing, versus what's a cross-through, which is being eliminated, versus an underline, which is being rewritten?
Right, and then, to answer that question a little bit, and I will explain that once we start looking at the sections, and this will also be a preview for what you'll be getting later, when you get the full sections, is that if an item is not underlined, and it's just regular text, that means it's your existing code.
Okay.
So, that means we carried that forward, we maybe moved it, we have a very detailed table that shows, because, remember, you had 32 sections, right, right now, and your code is very jumbled, and, you know, we took very carefully, adjusted it all so that it would flow a lot easier, and a lot of the new, a lot of the code that, in the readjustment, is existing text. And if it's black text, or just regular text, it's as was in the code, it's just in a different location. If it's underlined, then that means that it's new, and that usually will follow, if it's, if it's struck out, and you'll see it struck out, that means we deleted it. So, you'll, again, when you see the full sections, you'll notice that a substantial amount of text is as is, and as is.
But I noticed some of it is restated, it's not just, it might be in the header paragraph that it's been deleted, but it appears later in, in the sub-paragraphs that follow it. I'm right, I assume I'm right about that. You restated it in a different way, later on in, in that same opening section.
Possibly, yeah, I think so. I think with what we have with the seven questions, we, we actually pulled that text directly out, and I'll explain that.
Okay.
It's just a piece of it, but when we get to the last two parts, where we're going to show you substantially changed sections, and then completely new sections, you'll see the entire subsection.
So, we need to set a goal for ourselves, everybody understands that we're going to run probably till late 30, but we need to say, how much of this are we trying to get through tonight in order for you to continue with your work? And also, Jay wants to send this on to planning, for them to look at it. I want to make sure we are giving our best foot forward. I, also, we have a, we have a public hearing coming up.
Yeah, the seven questions are the most important thing for tonight.
Okay.
And getting direction on that. The other parts are really, we're just giving you a preview.
Okay.
And, and I'll just add, if you work through these seven very quickly, let's take advantage of the evening, you know, if that, you work through those seven at seven o'clock, let's keep working, you know, maybe we start heading into another section, so that that's less work to do down the road, you know? I think we're just going to have to feel out the evening, how it goes, and, you know, how this discussion works its way, so.
Yeah, and I think we really just want you to get comfortable with the new code, and then get comfortable with like, the review process that's going to be starting tonight, but then continuing in some form or fashion into the near future. And I think at the end, that's probably where we want to come back, is then to talk specifically about, okay, now that we've given you this preview, we've gotten answers to our seven specific questions, how do you want to proceed now further? And then, we can decide whether, you know, we'll say, okay, we're going to have a workshop for sections one through four in two weeks or something like that.
For us, in particular, okay.
Right, yes, and then we'll have a workshop for sections five through seven on a subsequent meeting, or something like that.
Okay.
Because, again, I think that with giving you that preview, and having the document in front of you, so that you can really look carefully at the sections that have changed substantially, we're hopeful that when we get to then saying, okay, here's the full sections one through four for you to review, you'll be like, okay, I, I see, and I don't really see anything else, other than what you previewed me before.
So, you're not looking for us to adopt anything tonight, you're just looking for us to digest what you're going to present?
On the seven questions, I think we want to get some direction from you, but there's not any, like, formal vote or anything like that.
So, all we're doing is, we're going to do a vote on the first seven, giving you direction to move forward, correct?
Correct.
If we get, if we get that vote, we've done.
It's a consensus vote.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for. We all agree that the, circuses are allowed in Stratford Center now. All agree, everyone's agree, okay, if you feel comfortable with doing an informal vote, that you've got consensus with the direction, you can do that. If it's verbal, it's really what you all feel comfortable doing.
Okay, let's try one.
And the, and the good thing is, with the questions, is that we, as a team, have come up with a suggestion, so we're actually going to say, are you, it's more like, are you comfortable with this, rather than just saying, what are your, you know, but you can, we can also say, what are your thoughts, but this is what we're suggesting. But we are, we tried to make it easier by giving you a, a good suggestion, and we can explain how we came up to that suggestion. And it, there is a full variety, from very simple, and I think it might be very clear to one.
To be honest with you, I recognize notes from our meetings, when we've had projects come before us, that Jay has actually taken notes of our response to that meeting. So, some of that, I can see where it's been wrapped into what you've been rewriting. So, it's worked, that process has worked, I think. So, you know, a lot of these answer problems that we've run into, that we don't know the answer to, or that we would like a different answer, to be able to give a different answer.
Many of these are from comments from you all at these meetings, since, for the past 10 years, so.
And we did, in addition, we went, just to let you know, the process that we've gone through over the last couple of months, is that we did go sec, we did do each of the seven sections individually, and we did have two rounds of reviews with Jay and his staff. So, and, you know, initially, like, the very first one, we, in many cases, we had dozens and dozens of questions, and then, you know, with his experience, and with his experience with you, we worked through a lot of them, so, you know, a big thank you to Jay and his team for, you know, helping us get through a lot of that, you know, challenges, to make it easier on you all to review because of, you know, knowing what your issues are and what your directives might be.
And if you can help us with that, if you can tell us the repercussions, the worst of the repercussions that this might be giving to us, no, because I think that is what we're concerned about, is, when we, when this gets presented to the public, where is the loudest screaming going to be? I, I see places where there will be some, but I don't think there's a whole lot.
Yeah, I mean, we're hopeful that we have dissipated a lot.
Yeah, I do believe that you have, from what I can read here.
I think the most important thing to continue to remember is that, you know, it's not an entirely new code, you know, in many, we varied, we didn't make any, varied few adjustments to like setbacks, except for where maybe it was mandatory, or that we needed to look at, or it was just something, you know, things like parking regulations, we compared it with others, but we, we feel like we, we didn't throw all the parking regulations out, we used a lot as, as the base point, same thing with signage. So, I think, I think you'll see that, in many cases, we have, you know, also made them much more user-friendly, but we're using like, what you already had, we're just putting it into a much better format.
I think what you're proposing for affordable ADUs, that whole section is close to brilliant, because those are the, all the problems that we have the most problems with.
Well, definitely thank you and Jay for that, because that's the one section that we did very little it, because we got the full direction from town staff.
Oh, well, thank you, Jay.
On that, so, but thank you.
Okay.
And that does show up in the, in the, in the first section.
Any other, any other, yeah, that's true, that is true. Any other comments, questions? So, I'm going to ask you guys to start with one, with one one?
Well, let's start with this page first, okay? Just the one pager, this is just to get you, you had that in the text, right? Before we get into the full document, let's just go through, let's just go through this, again, to catch you up with the, the seven new sections. So, again, we're my, we, we're going from 32 sections that your current zoning code has, and we have migrated that all down to just seven sections. So, we're hoping that just that simple format adjustment is going to make your work and, you know, public review of the documents extremely easy, because it's going to be, it's been really narrowed down into very specific things. Section one is introduction section, and this one covers basically the groundwork for the code, like the authority, the purposes, it explains the zoning districts, I mean, not in detail, but just like, lists them, it also gives you like, the, how the zoning regulations should be interpreted, conformity requirements, severability requirements, and effective dates, everything that your legal counsel will be happy are in there, so that they help give you some guidance on that type of stuff, and that's also pretty much what the state statute requires. We, again, this was, this was created from your existing documents, we will, you will see this later on, when we show you completely new sections, and if we, again, we migrated most of the existing language, but if there was something new, we followed very closely.
You migrated our P O C D into this opening, which is what I've been asking for all along, so.
Right, and we, and we used standard language, because this, in this particular case, there's a lot of standard language that we, that legally, we, we moved in. Section two, then, is the definitions, and we did consolidate definitions from throughout the code into this one location. Just one note, though, is, there is a couple instances, because like, for instance, the floodplain regulations have a lot of very specific definitions that are required by, for the floodplain regulations of the state, so we have a notation in section two that says that, that this is a definition of this code, but that it's actually officially parked in the floodplain regulations. And because it's noted in both places, like, if for, for some reason, you ever change the definitions in one place, you'll know that they have to be changed elsewhere. But in all other cases, we tried, we didn't try, we were successful in moving all the definitions into that one location. I think the coastal management area is another one, that's a very state and regulated with a lot of definitions, so they're, they're parked in both places, just for ease of use. You know, also, in, in developing the definitions chapter, we did take all the definitions, and we put them in a database, so that we could compare, like, if there were duplicates, if there were outdated definitions, and they have been updated, and when you see chapter two at some point in the future, you'll be able to see with the underlining and strike through definitions that were either changed or updated. Chapter, or section three, then, is the zoning districts, so we've collapsed all the various different districts into this one convenient section, and then, this section is divided between residential districts, affordable housing districts, commercial districts, industrial districts, other districts, and then overlay districts. Okay, so, and then, you'll see, when you start to see these sections, is that we tried to, for each one of the different zones within that, we tried to make it almost like just a one-pager on that district, so that it could be easily looked at, and then there would, you would be able to see where there might be links to other codes that you need to use, but it would be also very useful for the public, or for Jay and his staff, to just maybe make a copy of that and also give to somebody, since it's all conveniently on one or two pages. That then leads to uses, because after you know your district, the next thing you might want to know is uses. And there's two really, I mean, this chapter is, is really substantial in the fact that, you know, you, it, there's a consolidated use table now, which we'll show you, and, and that's going to be something we're going to talk about in a few minutes.
Oh, that's, that's this.
Yeah, and that's an entirely new, it's not new uses, but it's something that your code currently doesn't have, and that was one of the things that we talked about from day one, that would be the, probably the single most substantial change in the code, because your existing code has, you know, uses spread out through all kinds of different uses, or zoning districts, and in many cases, some of the uses were paragraphs long to say that it's automotive repair. And so, we went through a very detailed process to make sure that we have the same uses, but we went from, in many cases, a sentence or a paragraph down to like, a single word, and the rest of that text moved to the definitions, or the special use regulations, which is the next major component of the use.
Can you make sure that you put a legend on here?
The legend is in the documents, and you'll see that.
Okay.
Actually, where, when we get to the new chapter four, or the use table, you'll see where that, that legend is, is included there. But then, all of the use regulations for various uses that require a special permit are then listed after that, and there's a link in the use table to show you where that is for the use regulations, and then, all the use regulations are in alphabetical order for ease of location. We then have a, kind of a unique Stratford special development types, and this includes some of the things like the multifamily developments, older family, older adult housing communities, planned economic development districts, and things like that, so they're kind of specialized, they're not individual districts, but they're, they're special uses that kind of, or special development types. Then, we go to chapter, or section six, which is then all the site development standards. These also appear all in alphabetical order, and these are everything that somebody might need to know about how to use their site beyond the use. So, in other words, accessory buildings and structures, earth removal and fill, encroachment and lot standards, things like outdoor lighting, which is something new, the parking code is here, the sign code is here, a little bit about stormwater management, and then also water resource protection. So, all of those, kind of how you would develop your site, or, you know, or special type of codes, are all located in, in section six. And then, rounding us out in, in section seven, is all the administrative processes, procedures, and the enforcement. And this includes everything from going through each of the different application types, both from administrative applications to applications that come specifically to you or to the planning commission, and then, you know, we kind of review that, in some cases, that again, is language that has just migrated from the existing code, it's just that it's all been put into one uniform place. There are a couple of new processes, and some maybe new explanations, but you'll see that when we, when we review chap, or section seven with you. And then, one thing that is in this section that is new, and we'll talk about it tonight, is notification procedures, because we know, through talking with Jay, that was something that we wanted to add.
The what procedures?
Notification procedures.
Oh, okay.
And then, that's in chapter, or section seven. Okay, so, again, the, we reviewed these seven sections with you before, as far as the new format, we were able to stick with it as we made it through to the end, but we, this was just a preview to kind of let you, give you an overview of like, some of the code sections that you might be wondering where they ended up, and hopefully, this kind of answers those questions. Any questions at all from about the general format, or where things might have ended up, before we go into some specific questions?
My take is that this will reduce workload on, on planning and zoning office, but also on B Z A, and also on the individual applicants. It, it might take a while, but once, you could repackage all of these, almost for any specific thing, relatively eas, easily, to prevent a lot of this delay that happens when people didn't get one item done that they needed to get done.
Now, that, that's the hope. It's going to, like you said, it's, we're going to have to, it's going to take a little bit of feeling out to learn where the new home is for all these regulations, we can spout most of them off the top of our head now in the office, but learning where their new homes are will take a little while, but we'll be better off in the long run, in the end, so.
Any other questions about that?
Anybody, questions? Okay, let's continue on.
Okay, so, let's now turn, let's go to the second document that you have, the bigger document, so we'll, we'll start talking from this document, and if you want to open it up, Jay and I will kind of tag-team through the first section. So, if you turn to page four, section number one, these are the specific questions or items that we want to kind of get some direction from you on tonight, and this is probably the most important task for tonight. And considering how, you know, how long and how volumous your codes are, the fact that we've come down to just seven specific ones at this point, is, is, I think, pretty good. And some of these are a little bit more complicated, and we'll kind of give you some perspective, and then, some of them are probably a little bit easier.
So, take this as a, as an example, attached two-family dwelling, residential dwelling is being deleted, correct?
No.
It's highlighted, I'm sorry, it's highlighted.
So, that's the question. When you see that gray highlight, that is something that we want you all to discuss with us, give us some guidance. So, for example, currently, in the R M one zone, we allow for one family and two, two family dwellings as of right. You come get a building permit, as long as you meet all the criteria. While we are updating our code, knowing that, I mean, you all sit at these public hearings all the time hearing about the housing crisis, and how we need to be providing additional units, now is the time for you all to, to discuss whether or not, does our multifamily zone, should it allow for one, two, and three family dwellings? One, two, three, four, five, you know, or is it perfect exactly where it sits at one and two? And so, that's the guidance that we're looking for from you all, if that makes sense. So, what you see underlined is new, the purpose of the two-family residence district is to provide areas of highlighted in gray, is the question that we're asking you all. So, that whole, that whole first line, first two lines, is new. The use is the same, we always allow for two-family, but we're asking you now, do you feel it's appropriate to allow for one, two, and three families, or more? And so, that's what we would like to hear some discussion on. Robert, anything else?
Yeah, just wanted to add too, is that the reason why the purpose is here in its underline, just a little bit of background, is that for each district, we wanted to make sure that there was a purpose, because in your existing code, sometimes there, there are purposes for that district, and sometimes they're not. So, to make it uniform, we made sure that every district would have a purpose statement. And in all that, you'll be able to see them when you review the entire section three, but for when we got to the R M one district, and we were talking with Jay, we, when we were writing the purpose statement out, we knew that we would say attached two-family residential as a definite. residential as a definite, but then...
Because that's what it is now.
Right, and then Jay's question is then what we want to ask you, is that do you want, in the purpose statement, do you want to say that the RM1 district allows more than just two-family?
So if we were to simply modify by saying attached two and three?
Right, that, that could be an option.
Family, that's the easiest answer that we could change it to, which means you could put three houses on those lots. I assume that you would also be lowering the square footage, so you might be able to get, you might be able to get 3,000 square foot houses, 1,200 square foot houses, which in and of itself would be afford, more affordable, hopefully, the end result would have, would allow for more affordability.
That's exactly correct. So today, in the two-family zone, you need 5,000 square feet of lot area per unit in order to have a two-family constructed. So, in a, in a zone where it's allowed as of right, you need a 10,000 square foot lot in an RM1 zone. That's like a needle in a haystack, I'll tell you, there just are so few. And so when that regulation was put into place, we don't know the intent and why, but it was probably to make it harder to have multifamily homes in Stratford. There are so few 10,000 square foot lots in RM1 zones. So if the intent of the, this commission is to make it easier to maybe turn the dial up on the density slightly and allow for three families, or keep it at only allowing a maximum of two families in the RM1 zone, we lower the lot area requirement from 5,000 square feet per unit to 3,750. And so, and that's what we're proposing in, in the line actually down below. So, does that make sense? Does everyone understand that? It's okay if you don't, we'll explain it again.
So, we want three attached homes?
Or one on top of the other, a three-family house?
All of them.
Yeah. It, but it really, the three, the orientation, whether it's side by side or one on top of the other, it doesn't matter, as long as it's on the same property. So we've got two questions here, and I think, before we get to the lot area...
Some of those existing houses are four-family houses.
There are, there are four, five, six-family homes that are legal, but you couldn't build it today. So the first question that we're trying, that I would like to hear maybe a little discussion on is, in our RM1 zone, the multifamily zone, are we good with one and two families only, maximum, or we, would we like to see three families allowed in the multifamily zone? And then we can get to the lot area per, per unit question next.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with three families, I don't think I would go any higher than that. Increase it by one.
Because theoretically, you could build three, one right next to each other, and still not be much, you'd still be two stories tall, and you would actually not be over, overrunning the neighborhood. But at the same time, we would end up having some option of having affordable housing, just by virtue of, they would be smaller than what normally is there, and if you, I know from my other committee work, that's where a lot of our affordable rental housing is right now. So we would be joining, we'd be adding to what we, what Stratford's rental, affordable rental housing is at this moment.
And what I think it's important for me to mention is that, a lot of the other criteria, like parking, still applies, whereas a two, a two-family today requires two off-street parking spaces, a three-family will require three off-street parking spaces. So, you know, we're not just, we're not just turning up the dial on the density, but, you know, there are other thing, criteria you have to satisfy in order to meet it.
Like the lot. Dimensions, lot dimensions.
So the lot dimensions, exactly, the lot area per unit, exactly.
Yeah.
And so...
Let's just say that we lower the lot area per unit in an RM1 zone, from 5,000 square feet per unit today, to 3,750.
Per unit.
Per unit. To do with three-family, you essentially need the same that you need today to build a two-family. It's essentially a 10,000 square foot lot, a little bit less. So you're getting the one...
And we're sticking to 30 feet height.
And actually making it more reasonable, and easier to build the two fam, two-family today. If you look at the agenda, the zoning board deals, a lot of them are trying to build something that's allowed as of right in RM1 zone, just don't have a lot area. So we're trying to address that, you know, when you, when you get enough, when you, you get a section that has a high frequency of variances applied, there's either two, two grounds, one, the regulation is broken, or two, your zoning board deals is granting too many variances.
Jay, looking forward, how much of this would be, would end up being tear downs, or would it be rebuilding, rebuilds?
You know, it's hard to say, I, I can just tell you, I mean, I lived in, on the third floor of a three-family house for a long time, and so, in my younger years, and so, I, many homes in Stratford, I grew up in Bridgeport, many homes in Stratford are, in the multifamily zones are quite similar. They're two and a quarter stories, so you've got the two full fours, and then that third floor has got the roof line kind of cut into the edge, and it's a much smaller unit. That was constructed for additional storage for that second floor apartment. Or it was just storage, you know, you put mechanics up there. We all know, if you've driven by, and with the amount of cars you see in driveways, there are people living in those, and they're, they've been turned into apartments, so I would, would say, I, if I had to guess, and this is just speculation, that at least 50% of these are no footprint expansion, all they're doing is providing one additional legal parking space, right? To go from two required spaces, a third required parking space, to, to make that third unit legal.
And legal is the operative word, because all of these multi-unit illegal, it would actually give them an option other than being an illegal.
And, and, and there are the advantages that come along with that. You get building code in there, you get fire, fire marshal in there, you, you're now getting these ghost three families, they're only being taxed as two, but they're truly being used as a three-family. You're getting those on the tax rolls as well, so I think there's a number of benefits other than just upping the density for more housing, which it is doing. I think there's another, number of spillover benefits that the town would get, if they were to do something like this.
Well, I'm going to stick with Lenny, I was gonna say four, but I'm gonna stick with his three. Is there any other comments?
I have like three.
So is this something we think we can say, go off and do your work on?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're okay on this then, you guys move forward.
No, I, he, we're not doing votes on any of this, it's my understanding. Because they're still in the process of writing.
It's, it's maybe, it's, it's, it's something, I mean, it's...
It wouldn't make, the only thing we'd be voting on is sending it to planning, and we're just doing that administratively.
Exactly, that's what I know, it's a big problem.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep everybody. We're gonna move on.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry, we had, we just want...
Oh, let...
Okay, is there any way we can make that, those, like the third unit even an affordable unit, to get our numbers up on that?
So, so you could, I'm trying to imagine a way where...
Just a thought.
I mean, I'm not sure you can require it to be deed restricted affordable, you'd have to entice them somehow, I, I think, in order to, you know, for the same discussion that we've had about ADUs, well, yeah, sure, let's allow ADUs, but they all have to be deed restricted, and I think we've, it's been determined, and, you know, our council can confirm that case law or state chat you doesn't allow you to do that, but I might be wrong about that. But it's certainly something that we can consider, I think you have to, you have to have a carrot to, to make it attractive enough for someone to say, sure, yeah, we'll go through the process of, you know...
Can you leave that open then for now? Because we're, we're gonna discuss ADUs and affordable housing, because I think there might be a linkage between those two that you're talking about, that we could actually, that might be worth considering, finding a way to add that in.
I have a question though.
Yes.
If we, somebody pointed out that some two-family right now have been used as a three-family, if we know that, how do we allow that though? If we know they're not supposed to be used as three-family, they are...
If we allow them to do it legally...
Why do we allow that?
Why do we allow them to be illegal three-families?
Yeah. Yeah. So if you know they are using...
Well, if they know, I mean, I'm, hypothetically, I mean, we don't know, I mean, you, the tax assessor will essentially go out, look at it, and say, okay, three mailboxes, three doors, three meters, eh, it's a three-family. I've taken these to court, where you say, okay, hey, we've got three mailboxes, three names, three meters, and the judge will say, there could be 10, 10 mailboxes and 10 doorbells.
That's correct.
There's, that is not proof that it is legal, so... So, when the tax assessor will say, we're gonna tax it as a three, that's what the appeals process is, you know, you'll get folks come in and say, hey, whoa, 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 I'm not a three-family, and then the tax assessor will say, okay, well, let's schedule an inspection, so we can come in and correctly assess your property. So sometimes we, I mean, we, we may get complaints that there's an illegal three-family, it's very difficult to prove. We go to court with them all the time, it's very difficult to prove.
So, we, we, we're trying to convert these two, two-family into a three, to avoid them, to avoid the cheating.
To do what?
To avoid the cheating.
Cheating.
The cheating of these people have, they have three fam, two-family and using a three, so, that basically what we're trying to do, right?
No, I mean, I... I, I would say it's a byproduct of what we're doing, that, the intent is to provide more housing and to make the zoning, the zoning regulations more understandable. If it just so happens to cut down or reduce some illegal three-families, then that's a great side effect that we're gonna get from this regulation change. The intent is not to, to legalize and catch people who are doing something wrong.
Okay. But I, Jay, in fairness...
The goal is to get them doing something right, I, I think.
And, right, doing something right is the operative word, that hopefully, we're gonna end up with three units that are not substandard. Do you know what I mean? We're gonna, we're gonna address the market of affordability, of people who can only afford a one-bedroom rental apartment in Stratford. Right now, they're leaving, they're going to other places, they're going to Derby, they're going to, you know, we don't have enough of that kind of housing in Stratford. You know, I see it, my next-door neighbors have been struggling, they've been looking everywhere for a place to live, they just got married last week, and they still don't have a place to live in Stratford. They live next door to me, with their, with their, with his parents. It's a, it's a problem, it's a real honest-to-God problem.
Did I, did I answer?
Yeah, you answered, but, um, um, okay, with that, but, I hope, by trying to convert these two-family into a three, there's, there are other considerations to be made, because, but more than, we have to consider the lot now. Will, will these people be able to, to, they have enough land for, for extra parking?
Absolutely, and so that's a part of the, the process that we'll have to say, look at and say, okay, show me your site plan that shows three parking spaces, not stacked, one on top of the other, but...
No.
So the cars can get in and out without having to go down and knock on the first floor, hey, can you please move your car?
Yeah.
And, and so, that's what the site plan review process will be, that's what we look at when someone comes in with a permit to convert from a two-family to a three-family, first thing we're looking at, lot area, parking, first two things. If you meet those, okay, well then this is, this project has a possibility of getting approved, and now we'll look at the floor plans, making sure that they're not doing anything they're not supposed to be doing, and bedroom size, things like that.
All void. Yep.
So, are we okay to move forward on this?
Yeah.
Okay, you have two down.
And we're gonna move forward with, with...
Three.
With the idea, with allowing for three families...
At 35.
At 35?
3,750.
I'm sorry. Square feet?
Yes.
Lot area per unit?
Yes.
And we will explore the possibility for deed restricting the third unit as affordable, and how likely that would be for us to be able to do something like that.
Okay. Just also to talk about the affordable, affordable housing thing that you mentioned, is that, you know, we did talk about that a lot because of the, you know, discussions that the town is having, and then also within the POCD, and there was, you know, an existing affordable housing overlay, which has been, we're proposing deleting it because it's not being used, and we talked quite a bit with Jay and his staff about how to incorporate affordability requirements. Right now, as you'll see as we get further into it, the development type for multifamily A+ has an affordability component in it, because, and it has both a affordable, affordable housing from the Connecticut definition, as well as a workforce housing consideration. We felt that in our discussions with that, we felt that you probably needed to have a development of at least eight units or more, that would, you know, that would entice a developer to potentially consider that. But on the smaller units, it's kind of a case-by-case situation, it's even like the ADUs, you know, the assumption is, is that because they're a smaller unit, that they might be affordable, but there's not a requirement that they have to be permanently protected unless the property owner wants to do that. So, that might be the type, the same type of situation with this, you know, three units within a, within this one zoning district. It could be highly encouraged, but it might be hard to make it mandatory, it might shy a lot of people away from doing it unless they want a deed restrictive.
And I think if we said, all right, well, let's really sweeten the deal, you're allowed, you can go up to six units in the RM1 zone. Any, you know, then you say you're allowed to do four market rate and two affordable, then the, the development formula might start to make more sense, you know, where that is in terms of construction pricing today, I, I don't know exactly, but you, you need to allow for the density, that's what makes affordable housing work, that's why they can come in with so much more.
In my time on the Housing Partnership, that's what the public was asking for, something that's scalable in their neighborhood, that does not overwhelm it. So that's the one component that everybody agreed on clearly, that this is a way we can get more of that housing without destroying...
Right.
Other neighborhoods.
Right.
Or all neighborhoods.
And sometimes it's just adding to the variety of housing that's allowed in a town, that gives you naturally occurring affordable housing, and sometimes, you know, that's as valuable as permanently protected, by just increasing the variety. And it's, you know, as Jay said, we're not really sure there's that many units, or that many lots in the RM1 district now that would allow for that size to even build two, let alone three, but it's something out there that could be, could be useful, and maybe as time goes on, if you see that it does become something that's popular, and people are starting to build the three units, that might be a time where you say, okay, it's working, we've identified quite a few lots, so why don't we put that regulation in about affordability, you know, at maybe some future time, seeing how enticing it might be to start.
Have you included a section for workforce housing also?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
In, in that discussion on the, the multifamily plus eight development type, there's a discussion about workforce housing, and then it's also connected right now with the state program for workforce housing, and we, we kind of left it like that in case that program goes away or changes.
And we never know when it's going to lose money.
Because it's not a, it's not a mandatory thing, but it's a consideration, but we wanted to make sure the town was aligned with it, so that developers could take advantage of that program, and then come into the town easy to do that.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next.
Yes, the next question is on page six, and this is in the, this is also in the district section of the new, of the new regulations, or the updated regulations, and this is for the retail commercial neighborhood district, the C and C, and specifically, this is about building coverage. Right now... eh, this is about building coverage. Right now, um, that particular district does not have a building coverage requirement. Um, we thought it might be an oversight, Jay might be able to give a little bit of background, but we're suggesting that we include a building coverage, and we're suggesting that it be twenty-five percent. Um, Jay?
Yeah, and so this, this zone was created by a, a private developer, and so when they came in, these were essentially what they needed, what they proposed, eh, in order to make their development work and fall within the parameters of this develop, of, of these development standards. Every single zone that we have has a building coverage requirement, a maximum. You're only allowed to cover twenty-five percent or thirty percent, eighty percent, whatever it is. And so in order to be consi- we, we feel that in order to be consistent with every other zoned, eh, zoned development standard, that we should add in a maximum building coverage for this site as well. I mean, I just happen to know that this site probably has about, eh, ten percent coverage, and so, um, every other commercial zone that's very similar to the C N C is twenty-five. So, we didn't pluck that number out of thin air, we compared it to the other commercial retail zones, and are, we are recommending that you apply the same amount of building coverage, because if you don't, you could get many, many, many more buildings built onto the property.
Is it maximum or minimum coverage?
Maximum.
That's not light for commercial, twenty-five percent coverage?
I would say it probably is, but if you look at all of Stratford, I mean, that's kind of how Stratford has done it over the years, is it's been more conservative in terms of, eh, eh, the threshold is much lower for the maximum in Stratford than I would say, you know, Bridgeport or Milford, and Milf- those places you're allowed to cover more.
And remember, this is just for the building, like the building footprint.
It, it just seems light to me, I mean, if you were a developer, you can only do twenty-five percent on that piece of property.
And so may, and that's what the, this discussion is for, you know, maybe it's thirty percent, and you know, it may take us a, a change or two, to land on the sweet spot, so that's why we're here. If, if your gut is telling you thirty percent.
Tell me where this is again.
The C N C district is up by Ryder's Landing.
Okay. Okay.
Is there available, is there vacant land up there? No, so it's probably not gonna come into play too much.
This is fully, this property is essentially fully developed.
Is that make, does, is that footprint of that property now at twenty-five percent? So we wouldn't be making it non-conforming or anything?
I would say, I, I think it's actually around ten percent.
Okay.
The, the usage, doesn't, doesn't it depend on the usage of the building?
Say that again.
The activity of the building, what they're doing there?
It's the footprint of built structures, so not parking lot, but the footprint of the buildings and sheds and things like that.
Yeah.
That's what building coverage is. Not parking lot, just building footprint. So when you think about twenty-five percent, a quarter of the property covered by building, maybe another forty percent covered by parking, you know, you're creeping up to around seventy percent impervious area, right, with only thirty percent landscaping and open space.
And here, we're talking eighty, twenty.
Yeah.
How often do we say twenty is okay?
How often do we say twenty is okay?
For open space on a property.
Almost, almost no times. It's twenty-five, I believe, is the, the most intense that we allow. For building covered. No, that's not true. That, I think.
I, I'm saying for open space, not for building covered.
Okay. Um, yeah, twenty, I think, is about it. For the commercial districts anyways. So our residential zones, well, I won't get into that, we'll touch that later. So, so we landed at twenty-five percent. Um, if you'd like to see it at thirty percent, you know, that, I mean, that's, to me, somewhat of an insignificant modification to what we're proposing. It's pretty, pretty long, along the same lines of what we're thinking. If you're a developer. Yeah, not, not gonna be earth-shattering, an earth-shattering difference, twenty-five to thirty percent.
Yeah, good, tell me again why we, um, we, um, we impose twenty-five percent or whatever for coverage?
Well.
What's the reason, the main reason?
As a, so, for an example, you wouldn't want a hundred percent of the property to be covered by building, right?
No.
You want some of the water to be able to come down, get down into the open, the pervious area, so that water is naturally treated and purified and goes into the, into the, eh, eh, well, goes into the river, goes into the water table, goes into the water supply, and, um, ultimately will make its way out into Long Island Sound. So, why we, why would we want it at twenty-five percent? I would say, just for comparison, m- most of our districts hover around twenty-five to forty percent building coverage allowed. Residential zones are around, eh, I think it's fifteen percent, some are at twenty. So, naturally, your commercial zones, you would want them, you would want to allow them to cover more, right, more intense development. So that's how we landed at twenty-five. We compared that to s- commercial zones similar to this that are already existing, and applied it to this, implied it to the C N C zone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And this is only in relationship to the Ryder Lane properties, I'm gonna include all of those, because when that project came before us, we were very concerned with the fact that it's one of the last natural views of the Housatonic, and that, that was one of the reasons we were saying, increase your, eh, decrease your building coverage, because what they wanted was a.
No, it's at that meeting.
It was, they wanted a six-story building, and we said, no, we don't want everybody coming over the Skorsky Bridge to have nothing to see except a building. That it's really critical that the north end of, of Stratford remain forest, that we keep that, that visually stunning. I don't know how you put that into this regulation, but that was my thinking on this project when we were looking at it. Yes?
So you're talking about where the Starbucks is and the future development there?
Yeah.
And also, there's been a sign for the property next to that for sale, Realty World or something like that, so who knows what's gonna happen?
And that's all the same people.
Well, no, there's a house there.
No, no, they, but they own all of that, th- they're just not doing development yet on it.
So it's been sold? But somebody lives there, no?
All those houses were sold as part of the whole property.
Oh, okay.
They just did not want, they, Starbucks went in there first, the next thing they wanna build is a hotel, and then the third thing is gonna be retail or conference center or whatever, um, that's was.
Right.
What I remember of their.
Yeah, I knew about the hotel.
Sorry.
I don't know, trust me. You know how long it took me to get out of Orin Oak Lane? That's why I just made it? Twenty minutes.
But I know it could be thirty, thirty or thirty-five, I don't know, I mean, depending on. Depending on what, are they gonna build there? Yeah, we're okay, I'm okay with twenty-five.
I'm good with twenty-five as well.
We'll see if we can provide any more information, that'll be helpful to make the decision for you all.
Okay.
Okay? And so what we're asking Commissioner Petroselli is, do we remove that highlighted section that says, that puts a sunset on the moratorium? It exp- current, that's currently how it is. They expire, and we have to come back, and you all have to, I have to put together a new application for another two years. That's what we're considering, yeah, that's what. Is good until you all change it. And I would be curious. So I would be curious for Attorney Sullivan if she has any, eh, any input on this change, since, you know, maybe there's legal ramifications on whether or not, eh, we have to put a deadline on it. I know s- some towns do and some towns do not put a deadline. They just say, we've got a moratorium on, eh, diners, and some towns will say it's for one year, and some will just say, we've got a moratorium on diners, period, until we change it.
Well, I would like to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think the advantage to leaving it, that it's there until you change it, is that sometimes what people will do is they'll sit and wait, like, if you have an affordable housing moratorium, they're like, oh, it's four years, four years and one day, the applications come flooding in. If it's self-storage or marijuana, whatever it is, so I think that the easiest way to say that you have control over it is to keep it.
And I agree, it's less work, it's less, it's one less thing that I ha- I can forget about, because I'll tell you, a perfect example, we did have a moratorium on the, a methadone clinic, and luckily that year, I was on point and I had the application ready, and it was stamped in, but two weeks after I had stamped it in, someone had come, come in with an application.
So what we're saying is that we should just put the moratorium on it if we wanna change it at some point, don't put a date with it. I'm fine with that.
And that is how I would prepare future moratoriums as well, with under, with that same format. Is that what you're asking? Yep. I don't think so. I think that we would just have to be voting on this changed language.
Within the previously approved moratorium for the, for the methadone clinics and self-storage? Okay, and then all future ones would not have that twenty-four month timeframe?
The, for a period of twenty-four months would be removed? And it would say. We would show the start date for the moratorium? Start date would stay the same, that doesn't change. Eh, it would just say. There wouldn't be an expiration. Specified expiration. We would change the last two lines, where it says, this is the date it expires. Correct.
So we can't, no, we, we, um, we can't extend the, the, this period of twenty-four months, because if we say thirty-six months, we put a date to some, some eventual application that will come within, within, that we can't do, we can't say thirty-six. We can't, eh, we can't decrease to, to twelve months, there will be too many.
We'd be back in the same boat of, okay, am I here in thirty-six months? And then the person who has replaced me, do they even know there's this thing floating around out there that all of a sudden, they miss it one month, and another person comes in with a, an application of something that the commission does not wanna entertain?
And we, we need an expiration day, so.
And I used to have to prepare an application every year? To extend.
So leave it twenty-four? Twenty-four, leave it twenty-four? No?
No expiration date.
We have to have an expiration day.
That's correct. You could always change this if you wanted to.
Great. Okay, the next one is, um, on page eight, and this is, um, this is a, possibly a simple one too. This is, um, eh, eh, cut out from the new use table, but when we were putting together the use table, eh, and, and trying to interpret what the existing code said, we noticed that for private schools, um, that were allowed in the zones that are shown here, that it only mentioned elementary and middle school, but it didn't mention anything about a high school. And so, we wanted to find out from, you know, eh, we wanted to discuss that with the commission to find out if you felt that high schools should be in fact excluded, private high schools, or whether, um, they would still have to go through a process, but whether private schools should be considered, you know, elementary, middle, or high school.
Did a high school is written based on current circumstances? We don't have private high school here, so what they wrote it, it was the Catholic.
At Saint James, you had, Saint James Holy Name and Saint Mark's, and they're all elementary schools, but there's no more holy road than that, right?
I mean, it, it may be based off of existing, right?
In any zone where a school is currently allowed today. It could be a middle school, it could be an elementary, it could be a private high school, Stratford Prep or whatever, you, you know.
Right.
That's correct. Right now, they could not.
It makes no difference to me, I don't care. If you wanna do it, do it.
And I, and I should've meant, been clear about this, many of these things that we're proposing tonight, we kinda feel that there's some merit to entertain them. That's why we're proposing them. It's not just, we're just throwing it out there and we have no real, if you wanna ask my opinion on some of these, I'm happy to give it, but I also don't wanna sway you all before you've had. Your discussion. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, yeah. The next one, um, looks more lengthy than it really is, it's just that the section has a lot of words in it, but basically what this boils down to is the alcoholic beverage section, um, that we've updated in the use regulations. For the most part, it's now following the state statutes, and we'll, we'll talk about that in more detail when we, when we talk about the entire section four. But the question that, eh, Jay and the team wanted to bring to you tonight was whether, and this is because I think he's doing this already, and he can explain that, but for grocery store beer permits only, whether that could go, become an administrative approval. Um, the language is actually on the page eleven at the very end of number seven, where it says, or the grocery store beer permit which may be administratively approved by town staff per section, and that's the new section that they would have to be approved by. So, all of this language that's here really just comes down to whether you concur with, um, with administratively approving beer permits, and Jay can kind of explain that a little bit more.
So you don't have to go to the Liquor Commission for beer permit?
You still would have to go to the state of Connecticut to get your license. You would not have to go to the Zoning Commission for a public hearing.
It works for me, one less thing for us to do.
That's right. Very few towns require a public hearing for a grocery beer. Totally understand it for a liquor store or a bar, but for a market that is selling merchandise to go to have beer, to me, eh, were, our staff is comfortable signing off on those, eh, with the caveat, you just have to meet the state law in order to be able to do that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. So they could come to you, you could do it, then they gotta go to the Liquor Commission. That's fine with me.
Because I, what I'll tell you is, a lot of places, once they find out they have to go for a public hearing, they go buy beer at the liquor store and they sell it illegally. So we'd rather have it done the right way. So we'd rather have it done the right way.
So on page ten, uh, number four. Jay, I, I just might not run into this before, but of course the paragraph here, uh, zoning commission, shall, they're gonna approve that fish.
Existing language here.
I know, and pickings provided they are not in public parks or beaches. So do we have lip insurance conflicting that there is alcohol? There is alcohol. How's it in the duck beaker, of course, that here, which can
Yeah, many of these things are either done by ordinance, which supersedes a zoning regulation, um, where certain things are allowed.
Where we are part of the parts and beaches. You don't have to do it.
Blues on the beach, I have no idea, I've never heard of it.
I have just a question.
Fourth of July, I've never heard of it.
Uh, what, I, can I have a definition of the clerk? It says the clerk of the zoning commission. Can we, so shouldn't it say the zoning administrator? Can we change that? Cause to me, it seems like some, some clerk in town hall could walk by and approve it.
That language clerk.
That's a good point.
I'm happy to take that liquor part out of there and let it be ordinance only. I'm happy to do that. If that's what the commission wants, I mean
It's, they're doing it anyway. It's confusing, they're not, because some groups want to do that at the end. Some groups want to do that at the end. So it's inconsistent in its application too. Everybody else will tell. Okay, so
So we're gonna delete number four?
No, change it to
Oh, sorry. Well, he said he, like, delete it completely?
Yeah, I would think, but it's for one day permit, it's only
Yep, one day permit. The VFW. The Rotary.
Are we changing the wording or we take it out or?
Take it all together, it's for one day only, so we don't do that.
One day, okay. I got you, I got you.
We'll remove the language provided they are not in public parks or beaches and then the word clerk is gonna be changed to planning zoning administrator or is designated, because our zoning enforcement officer can sign off on these as well. Okay, but now going to one six or
And they did agree with the, uh, grocery store permit being administrative?
Yes.
Okay.
What's that, one six, Tom, and you should delay the, and this should be
Uh, yeah, this, um, I guess I'll let Jay talk about this one because he said there was a lot of discussion when this got put into the code. Uh, but we feel that, um, because it talks about some content that you added, we feel like there, if there might be some legal ramifications. And so we're suggesting that possibly we adjust this and move it to the sign code, but, and then, and just follow state statute. But I know that you all and Jay had a lot of discussions about this when this first went into
Well, I would say if it's state statute, we just follow it.
And I would agree with that, Commissioner. And it, and it wasn't so much conversation that you all had. We received comments from the health department about not wanting, about regulating content, which we should not be doing. I think you've heard me say, look at the Supreme Court cases, a lot of them have to do with signs and content. And so we don't, I don't wanna get into the, uh, into the business of regulating the content. We just allow what state statute allows and, and I think that's, that way we're consistent with what the law is.
Jay, is it the one A, C? Are saying, or at A, can you say?
It's, uh, number two. It's number two.
The question that we're proposing that we wanted guidance on was what was highlighted in gray here, number two.
But, but, but this
Those things above are being deleted, but we're not, we're not talking about those questions right now.
This is not a section.
Nope.
This is our cannabis.
This is our cannabis section. Yep. Those are updates that are happening concurrently with this, but we didn't have any questions about eliminating those.
I remember hours long discussions about now's operation. You, seven, ten, to ten P. I don't know that we ever came up with those two numbers.
So those, the discussion about the hours of operation, even though this isn't one of the questions that we're talking about today, but we're, we're talking about it, so let's go. Or let's finish talking about it is, those were specific conditions that a church wanted of a cannabis place around the corner. And so you all were trying your best, even though the zoning regs say seven to ten, seven in the morning, ten at night, because of your specific circumstance and the criteria that, and the latitude the special permit process gives you all to make changes to those hours of operation. That's where the discussion was. So I would say that as long as the statute says seven AM to ten PM, that's what we should allow and you all can adjust it if you feel exact.
Can we, can we go back to, um, to A and to A and C, general requirements?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that in number one, A through C, the reason why there's changes there is because the state chat, statute changed. And so we adjusted it per state, state statute, um, because they eliminated, um, since you adopted it originally, they, the state statute had a limitation to the number of dispensaries within a town and it was based off of the size. They eliminated that. And in talking with Jay, we updated it so that, because the town still wanted to keep, um, a limitation. So we basically had to adjust it so that the language would be similar to what you allowed before, but we, um, adjusted it per the uniqueness for Stratford. The state did, yes, the state changed it that if you wanna have, um, a whole lot, you could, um, but which is what you were allowed to have before based off of the state previous.
It is, I, I think it can fix with, with C, so that's
So C, and, and the explanation behind that, when we originally put this up, we didn't want them only on the borders of our town and be bad neighbors to our neighbor, our neighboring municipalities. Sure, we'll allow this thing that we're not really sure what it's gonna be, but we only are gonna put it right on the border. We've now, after hearing a number of applications for these types of uses, see that, okay, well, we'll one, um, let's say one of these ends up closing or selling and, and now we're left with one. We now know that there are locations within seven hundred feet of a municipal line that are really gonna be ideal. And so, you know, maybe we don't wanna close the door on that seven, uh, we don't wanna close the door on that opportunity. That's why the plan is to get rid of that seven hundred foot rule from a municipal line. That's what we'd like to do. And in C, the way it was worded also said, no more than two dispensaries or production grow facilities. And we had questions, does that mean?
I mean, it don't.
Does that mean you're just allowed two and regardless of what they are, two is, that's the number? Like now we have two, uh, retail, does that now mean that there are zero production facilities that were allowed? So we're clarifying the language to say what it always was meant to say. We're allowed two retail, two production facilities.
Currently, we have one, one each, or on the books.
Two retail and two production on the books. One, one of the, one of the production facilities has expired and they're gone. The second one is, has filed for a building permit. They're up and on their way.
Uh, can we just change the wording to make it clear?
Could we change it to, would you wanna change it to?
Two, two retails, two protector, productions.
And that's what we've changed it to, exactly. That's what it's, that's what it says now.
But when, when we said, um, not less than fifteen feet from each other, what does that mean?
Not less than fifteen hundred feet from
Fifteen hundred feet, yeah.
So I couldn't open a retail cannabis store here at town hall.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Robert couldn't open one across the street. They need to be fifteen hundred feet apart from one another.
So we're gonna have, you might have more than two, what I'm saying?
Well, you can have more than two, but it's just that those two have to be at least fifteen hundred feet apart.
They need to be fifteen hundred feet apart.
That's so that they don't get too clustered, clustered together.
Oh, listen, yeah.
No, so we, it was determined that you couldn't, when we wrote this regulation, it was determined that we couldn't put a hard number on distance from schools, uh, addiction centers, but we have, but part of the criteria that you all have to consider when you're approving one of these uses, how close they are and how it may impact those specific uses. So it's not a hard number, but you all, that's the basis for your decision is those uses.
Okay.
Questions?
So everyone feels comfortable with changing the signage to what the state, state law allows?
Correct. Okay, the last one, uh, the last question that we have is related, it's in the sign code. And this is specifically about whether, um, because of the fact that electronic message signs have become a very common, uh, sign, um, technique.
Okay, I'll go.
Jay felt that it might be good for you to consider the possibility of some regulations for them. Um, so basically what we did is we pulled some, um, industry standard, um, possible regulations to regulate them. Um, and then I know that Jay had mentioned that you all have had some conversations on this in the past and so we wanted to just talk about it some more.
And what I'll add, the context for that is, that was for government buildings. So it was a proposal to allow them at government buildings, electronic message signs, which, you know, at face value seemed like is a good idea. How we were gonna be regulating content again, okay, we have no problem with St. uh, James doing their pancake breakfast, but maybe there's a problem with, um, the cannabis store wanting to say fifty percent off on, on, whatever. Or think of another use, a fraternal, uh, another organization that is far worse than that. You know, hate group that, look, it's free speech. Do we want to be evaluating content and government signs? That's what killed that, that idea. We were worried about how we were gonna regulate the content. So this is essentially saying that we are allowing these, if, uh, you know, a store would like to have a, uh, an electronic sign, an electronic message sign, it would have to meet this criteria. The only thing I wanted to add to this is that it doesn't allow for any off-premise advertising. You know, uh, St. James, if they were able to put up a sign, uh, an electronic message sign, they can't advertise for, um, I don't know. You know, yeah. I, I feel like I'm bashing the cannabis thing, but just the only, the little league, you know, that's not happening on the premises. We don't want it to become a little billboard.
So they could do something like, you know, we're having a foggy school pancake breakfast on Sunday. That would be okay.
Exactly. As long as it meets these criteria, these three criteria here. Which we think is a nice update for folks to have. You know, they can, they're, they're, they're in, investment in trying to, uh, promote maybe some of the things that are happening onsite, uh, can go a little bit further.
So this, this is for commercial?
Uh, well, really this is for both, but this is, I mean, it's for whoever decides they wanna put up a sign.
Cause where we go far, of course, is, um, I mean, regularly content.
And if so, some other department wants to regulate content on an electric sign, on a, on a, uh, electronic message sign here at town hall, I'm happy for them, but the other proposal was that I was gonna be reviewing the content and I said, I don't feel as comfortable with that.
But if a commercial business wanted to have an electronic message sign, they would still have to come in and get a permit. And then they would have, in reviewing the permit, you would have to make sure that the contractor or the sign company is supplying all the information that meets these regulations. So regarding like the, um, intensity of the light, um, uh, setting, how often the, the sign can scroll and things like that. So this would, um, really help make sure that the electric message signs that got installed were, um, you know, of a higher quality or
We have a project that, that was built exactly
Got a project that fell exactly in this situation with, um, the charge, vehicle chargers that had LED panels that would have been, their revenue stream was the advertising of the panels. They weren't expecting to make money off the electricity, which we didn't wanna have eight of them, you know, blowing light out into all different areas. But their response was to put individual panels outside of all the stores in that shopping plaza. Um, which essentially this is saying it's okay to do now. Correct?
Not for electric vehicle signs, this is for
Retail, correct?
Electronic message sermon has to be, uh, of course.
We don't say.
So maybe, that's a, maybe, maybe we add, we add, uh, an additional criteria. So I was gonna suggest adding D, no off-premise advertising, which covers exactly what you're talking about.
Yes. Yeah.
Cause what you said was, at that meeting for the, for the car chargers.
For the car chargers was, look, if you wanna advertise, uh, pineapples or fifty percent off at Stop and Shop where this is, sure, why not? If you wanna advertise a sale on milk, well, sure, why not? We don't want you advertising for something in Torrington. So, okay.
I do not know, I don't know how regulations could correct that, but to me, um, electronic messages are, are disruptive. And, and, um, can cause problem, traffic problem. I know, I know I went through that. People can, people can be driving and then there, there's a display, maybe the display need to change. The, the display, you take time, you slow down while driving to, what is say, what does that say? It's, it's kind of destructive. So how could we correct that?
Well, what, what, if, if I could speak for Jay, this, what you're seeing here was two separate projects that we worked on on zoning that we tried to address exactly those, distractibility and all of that.
Yeah.
And light pollution. With, those were issues that they had to be automatically dim as the light, as the sun went down, the sign had to have automatic, automatic dimming capabilities. Uh, these, all this exists for all these, all this technology. So those kind of things were, is what you see here on the paper, is what any sign maker is going to have to fulfill. But that's not a big deal for, for electronic sign makers.
And look, you're not wrong. I mean, the point of the sign is to distract whoever's looking at it, to look at it, right? And so you all may feel, look, electronic signs, that's not what we want in Stratford and, and I would totally support that. But, so I, under A, there shall be no safety hazards created by the sign's illumination effects on traffic patterns. That's hopefully to try to address that. If we see one that's maybe flashing or creating a real visual distraction. Uh, B, the message sign shall be displayed for a period of at least ten seconds so you can't have rapid changing to where you're driving and, you know, you, you're trying to catch it before it changes. It's up for ten seconds. And then C, the message displayed shall be static and then transition from one to another, uh, shall be uh, shall be instantaneous to the human eye without a transitional effect. That's to try to address that. Will it always do it? No.
Could we, could we add a disclaimer in there or a suggestion that they, that the intention of these is primarily in the parking lot areas and not for passing traffic? Do you know what I mean? That the, the visible area should be, should be kept within the range of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Plus the location. So if we don't like the location, we can, they can't just say we're gonna
I guess they can't. St. James wouldn't wanna have it just in their parking lot.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you, if you say, well, it can't be visible from the street.
Yeah.
They may say, well, then why am I doing this?
Yeah.
The people are already here in the parking lot and I don't know.
We've, we've, we spent like twenty hours at least on this issue, i- in both planning and zoning for two years. Um, so it's, you'll never find a perfect solution.
So she can get it right.
But currently we don't have anything in our zone. But currently, we don't have anything in our zoning about sign, electronic signs.
Well, what you have to also remember is that this is under the general sign requirements, okay? And this is like saying that if you come in for a wall sign for a business, if you want it to be an electric mess, electronic message sign, then it's gonna have to meet these criteria. But that still is gonna have to come in as a permit for a wall sign, a wall business sign.
And in the new wall sign section, I don't know where I read it, we have all the lumens and all of that that comes in. Does that all apply to these electronic signs also?
Well, these have their own, so no, no sign shall exceed 7,500 nits, and that's the standard luminosity measurement for the Candellas.
So we're basically covering everything that we're covering in the light pollution regula, zoning regulations?
It would have to comply with that.
Okay, so that, that this is attached to that, they first have to meet all those requirements, and then they have to also meet these requirements. So it's a tough road for people wanting to do this, based on...
We'll ask for, as Robert mentioned, if someone came in, wanted to do this, they have to pull a building permit, an electrical permit, and we would ask for the spec sheet. Please provide a spec sheet that shows compliance with A, all the subsections, B and C. And then once we see that it meets all those, the spec sheet, we can approve the permit.
And that's building department, that's not necessarily...
Building and zoning, it's both of us.
Okay.
And this isn't an allowable ability for a new type, a new like sign, like it's not like you could put this in the parking lot unless the current sign code, you know, says you can have a monument sign or a wall sign. This is just the type of wall sign or the type of monument sign. So it shouldn't be a situation like you were saying about somebody having one in the parking lot or something like that, because you currently don't allow that anyway. Right?
Ladies, gentlemen, any comments, questions? Do we want to move forward on this one?
Let's move forward.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Okay, well, that was actually our last of our seven questions. So now what we're doing is we're...
Pretty good.
Yeah. So the last two sections are really just for informational purposes, and again, we can either just kind of give you a preview and just kind of cruise through them, or we can kind of go slowly through them. I'm not, it really depends on what everybody wants to do. But if you look at the table that's on page 16, I'll just want to, I just want to kind of give you an overview real quickly before we start to go through each one. So out of all of the code sections that are, you know, on this initial one pager that we gave you, there are, how many are on here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. There's nine sections that we wanted to draw your attention to that are, that are pretty substantially changed. And so we're presenting them to you now for you to get familiar with them, because this is where some of the biggest changes are within the code. So that later, it might help when you look at the entire section four, for instance, that these will have already been something you've looked at and are already starting to become comfortable with. So five of them are actually within the use regulations, so they're in the new chapter four. So that's what 4.1, 4.4.1 means for addition, for example, that's next to the accessory dwelling units. That's the new code section, in the new code for accessory dwelling units. But we also, in addition to what Chairman Watson started with in the beginning about accessory dwelling units, we have substantially updated that based on information we got from you. Alcoholic beverage section has also been updated based on state statute. We also updated the boarding section for clarity. Seasonal dwellings was something that was in your code, and that's been updated for redundancy and for clarity. And then also the wireless telecommunications section, which is also in, again, the use regulations, was updated because there were, we wanted to make sure that we were matching more closely with state statute and the Siting Council regulations. In addition, multifamily development plus eight is also something that is substantially updated, and this is what used to be the resident apartment section. Also, the coastal management area in use types, this is update to be compliant with state statute. Parking and loading, the parking code for the town, you know, this section has been substantially updated to update some of the parking ratios and some allow for EV charging and also to include bicycle parking. And then lastly, the signs code has been substantially updated, again, so that we, we kind of moved it around so that it would be easier to understand and to flow through that section. So these are, that's just a quick overview. Do you want to kind of go through the first one?
Yeah, and I'll just add to that overview that I really think that four of these items, we're gonna have similar discussion that we just had with the prior section. You know, there's, you all have intimate knowledge of, I think, these items, and so we're gonna have some discussion about them, similar to what we just had. The ones like alcoholic beverages, boarding houses, seasonal dwellings, telecom, coastal area management, we are essentially making our regulation compliant with the state law. So there really shouldn't be a whole lot of discussion about wanting to do something that is against the law. I would imagine, we just want to walk you through those. So what I would say is, you know, we're at 7:30, I don't know what everybody's energy level is like, would we rather go over quickly the easy items or start digging in and see how far we get with accessory dwelling units, and then the multifamily housing, and then the parking, EV park, EV charging stations and signs? I mean, the, the time to speak, and I'll let Robert, you know, if Robert has another vision, I think the time to really talk through the implications of these things like we did on those last items, the time, I think, is now to have your figuring sessions.
Are we gonna have another session like this prior to the public hearing?
Maybe, most likely, several more.
Okay.
And that's not a hearing, that's our open house. We're gonna hopefully get feedback on a lot of these same items from people. Or do you all want to wait to hear what some of the community members feel about some of these items, and then based on what you hear from them, have this detailed work session? You know, you could say, hey, look, I spoke to 20 people of the 30, they all said ADU should be allowed to be detached or the opposite. Well, that may help you make your decision in this discussion here. So, you know, I think you could really go either way. You may want to have the detailed conversation now, or, or just do general overviews now and wait to make your detailed, get your consensus until after the workshop.
I think the general overview and then listen to my favorite word, our constituents.
And that works for us. We want you all to kind of help decide how this, the path that this goes.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I mean, and that's kind of what I was hoping too, is, you know, we wanted to share this with you as soon as possible so that you could become familiar with these sections that are changing the most. And I, you know, there's, like, from this point forward in the rest of this document, there's a lot of stuff here, just like there will be when you get... Yeah, exactly. So that... Yeah, but... But I think everybody still needs to read it carefully and then start to figure out where their questions might be.
And the other alternative would be that we more quickly go over almost every, as much as we can tonight, right? Or maybe one more section quickly and let you all read them, you know, on your own, and then respond to what you hear at the workshop. What do you think, Robert? Do you think we have time to make it through this section to go through quickly? Section three?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I think we could just give a quick overview to let, you know, start to point them out again more specifically, and we can show them, again, reminding them what the underlying strike through and regular means, and then maybe just point to, like, this is what changed, and like, take a look, careful look at that. And I think we can. Yeah, I mean, I think, there's like about 15, I think, that we, between this, section two and section three, and we could go through them pretty quickly, just pointing them out.
Well, I think the quick overview is the best way to go, because we'll get more in.
Okay. Okay, so if we, page 17, the first one, which is accessory dwelling units. We've already kind of talked about this several times tonight, so this is actually the full accessory dwelling unit section that appears now in the use regulations. And this basically, again, there's strike through that, you know, it shows strike through and underlining so that you can see what's new and what's been deleted. And this is following very closely with the information that Jay shared with you previously, had some conversations with you, and then he instructed us how to put this section together. So again... Yes, if, that may be the case, I mean...
Underlined.
What's underlined is new. So sometimes things are struck out, but there's not like a replacement for it. But in many cases, there are. So again, anything that's not underlined or struck out means it's existing text and it's being carried forward. Anything that's, again, struck out is being deleted, and anything underlined is being added. So, you know, and this is, and it's been reorganized slightly in each one of these. So again, we try to always have like a purpose when it's applicable, sometimes specific, unique definitions, and then the process or the regulations. And so again, you can kind of review this in more detail to kind of see, you know, if everything is what you were expecting for ADUs is here. And probably the more important is to look at letter E, the general requirements, because this is really the, the most detailed part about the ADU. So the first couple parts are really just the administrative, but then E, the general requirements, this is really where, like, what is allowed or not allowed for an ADU.
And just for context, this is almost the identical regulation that you all reviewed a year and a half ago and wrote, and forwarded to the Stratford Housing Partnership. There you go, look at that. And so I've included the letter, the response letter in your packet from the housing partnership of what they, how they felt. And so very little change, other than they were unsure about whether or not we should allow these to be detached now or attached. And so when you read through this, know that you have already really said, we feel comfortable, but we want more information. The more information is here in this additional letter for context for what you all approved informally about a year and a half ago.
And based on what we talked about, I'm not going to go through the general requirements each individually, but that's just your homework assignment on this one, is just look at it very carefully, but you should find it in good order based on what you talked about before. And I just will mention that it still only allows for detached.
So, correct. So, and what I was gonna say is, the two key changes from my perspective, there are three. One, you no longer need to be related to the person in the unit. Two, if you have a 20,000 square foot lot, you are allowed to have a detached ADU, that's up for discussion. And three, almost all of this strike through has to do with compliance and reporting and making sure it's a family member, and affidavits, that we will not have to do, because it's not going to be required, most likely, is not going to be required to be a family member at this point. Number seven?
Page 19, not 18. Number seven at the very bottom.
Yeah, so we may have to cross out that section. Two members who are members of the family. Okay. Which one, Mr. Chairman? Under which section? Okay. I'm not sure what section, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. Section E? Okay, this is if, if they're going to remove an ADU, let's say they want to reduce their taxes, they no longer want to be a landlord, this is what they would do, so... Remove all cooking appliance? To be cut and capped is what you're saying, to add that language? The, the, the mechanicals need to be cut and capped inside of the wall? Under section E, number two? Okay, notify the zoning enforcement officer and building official? And I suggest that we keep that. We want that, the homeowner invested in the property to make sure it doesn't turn into rentals all over. The primary? Oh, that's saying that, that when we say that the owner has to live, the owner must own 51% of the shares of the property.
Right.
So that we just mean the majority owner. Robert and I went in on an investment property together, a single family, and wanted to rent it out, and, I'm sorry, and wanted to add in an ADU. If Robert was 50 to 51% ownership based on the financials, he would have to live there, it couldn't be me. And I still, and I think that that's what we... Correct. Correct. What's that?
What I think, I understand is, suppose it's a parent and a child, and the parent wants to live in the smaller space, and the child, and the parent still owns the house, but the child needs the bigger space, and that would be fine. Isn't that like the simple version of it?
In section C on page 17, under the definition of principal owner. And so Commissioner Ewell, you bring up a fair point, the owner of not less than 51%. So if it is 50/50, maybe we need to think about a revised number from that. So I'll put a, I'll circle that and make sure that we come up with a, a more easily to interpret percentage number. So, I'll put a, I'll circle that and make sure that we come up with a more easily to interpret percentage number. I have that struck out, yes. Okay. Commissioner Petroselli, section E, subsection seven, it's the last one on page nineteen. It's that second line we would be striking out. Who are members of the family of the principal owner? Would recommend that you, under section E, you have a close look at subsection thirteen. That's the one, that's the instance in which we would be considering to allow detached ADUs. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that twenty thousand square foot number where we, currently, we say if you've got a lot, twenty thousand square feet or more, you could have a detached ADU. Maybe that number's too high, maybe we want to make it easier, maybe it's ten thousand square feet. I, I don't know, and that's where, that's what I'm really going to need guidance on. Number thirteen, that's the situation in where we would allow for a detached ADU. For example, a detached two-car garage in the back that you want to turn into an ADU. All right, so, so much for a quick overview. But the other ones will be quicker. I mean, this is really good feedback for us to have now anyway, so...
Okay, any more questions on ADUs? Or you're going to be reviewing it more? Are you ready to move on? Are you ready to move on? Okay. Okay, so the next one is on, starts on page twenty-two. This one is the alcoholic beverage use regulations. This has been updated, but it has been updated to make sure that it's compliant with state statute. So, a lot of things got crossed out, and there were some adjustments to the different type of permitted districts and the, and the different names because of the state permit changes. And then this, this section also does include the one question that we talked about earlier, which is on page twenty-five, about whether the beer permit become, could become a, it's number seven at the top of page twenty-five, about whether that could become an administrative approval, and we already talked about that.
And, and just, so, an example, so if you go to page twenty-two, if you look under permit description in that table, the third item down, restaurant or cafe permit. Cafe permit is no longer a permit in the state statutes and, and is part of liquor control. They got rid of that and it's now something else. So, and they change these all the time, which is actually frustrating. And they'll add new things like manufacturing permit, brewery, winery, cidery, and meadery. That's, that's what the applications actually, we're trying to mimic the applications and be more consistent with the state.
So when the state makes a change, you can't just change it on your own? It has to come before us? It has to come before us?
I'm not allowed to change anything without you all giving me...
So when the state makes a change, we would have to make the change to comply with the state?
I would hear about it, bring it to your attention informally, like we do at the meetings. Say, "Do you guys want to vote to give me the, the direction to put together an application?" And then we handle it the next month. So they call it, and it's still new because I actually had an application come in just recently for the same thing that was given to, to an applicant by the state. They were given the wrong application. They wanted a seasonal outdoor beer permit, which is a beer garden. And what they came in with from the state was a traditional restaurant liquor permit. And they said, "This is what the state gave us." And so, I think they're still getting used to all their own permits, as long as we have them all covered. Because we have always treated the Little Pub, for example. They're serving food, they're serving alcohol, beer and wine and alcohol. That's a restaurant beer permit. We consider, we would evaluate it no different than a, than a rain gar, uh, rain garden, a beer garden type of liquor application. You know, we're looking at all the site, we're looking at the parking, how are you controlling it within the confines of the site? We would look at it all exactly the same. So, what Little Pub did was they came in, a state official gave them their seasonal outdoor dining permit, outdoor liquor permit, and I said, "What, you know, what's this?" "Oh, this is a new one from the state." And so I looked at the criteria and I said, "This is the same thing as our restaurant liquor, so I am more than comfortable signing off." And then I called liquor control and explained to them, "Hey, look, they didn't go for a outdoor, a seasonal outdoor beer permit, they went for a restaurant liquor." They said, "No problem, as long as you understand what you're signing." Right. We can explore, we're going to put a note down that says, you know, "Consider adding beer garden, a beer garden, seasonal outdoor dining slash beer garden permit to this." And make sure that we're, we're covered. It's not a big deal. Seasonal outdoor liquor. I think that's what it's called, seasonal outdoor liquor. As long as I, me or whoever's in my position is interpreting it the way that we have, it won't be a problem whether we add it or not, as long as it falls into the appropriate liquor permit that I'm signing off of.
Do you want to, Jay, talk about the boarding and the seasonal dwelling ones, since that's kind of very unique?
Sure, so, page twenty-six. So, currently, we have regulations that talk about what is the maximum allowable, allowable unrelated folks living together in one, in one property, one single-family dwelling. And so, you know, there have been questions about, you know, what we can legally require and what we can't. And so currently, we allow for three unrelated folks to live on a single, single-family dwelling. It gets very complicated when you think about, well, okay, unrelated. So, it could be myself, my, my mother, my father, my uncle, my wife, my five kids, I don't have that many, and my brother-in-law. And so, we all count as one person, one unrelated, right? And so, we're all related to each other, we count as one. I could rent to two or more unrelated people. Obviously, more than three people, right? So it, it brings in the challenge of, you know, how, what we want to allow in a single-family dwelling. And this is a cultural thing, too. A lot of different cultures will have multi-generational, multi-generations living under one roof. And so, how easy do we want to make it while staying within, I think, what we can legally do? And I think we'll end up needing some legal advice on how we end up structuring this. But that is essentially what we are talking about in section B, and with very little change. The letting of rooms to, and that, no more than two persons. So, nothing has really changed in B, but I, I want to make sure that we're allowed to regulate the way that we are doing that.
Yeah, I, I'm going to look at that because I, I think there's rules about, it's, it's really come out of the sort of college stuff where it's like four unrelated people, or it's also that a lot of people now, although they have a relationship, are not necessarily related. So, it's a couple that are not married. And so you would get, if you had two couples living in the same place that were not married, you'd have four people, and it might be, you know, sufficient space for that, but they're, they're not related. So, you know, I think we need to be a little careful about that. And I, I believe there's law out there now that says you really can't, you can't force people to be related, you know, whether, and, and sometimes the definition even of related becomes, you know, life partner as opposed to spouse, you know, so I'll, I'll look at that, but, but I, I think we need to...
Make sure we have that one dialed in so that we're allowing for the right thing and not prohibiting the wrong thing. So, section C, which is the boarding houses, and that's really a rooming house, three to five unrelated occupants. We may need to have a layer for that as well, for, of legal review. But that is, this is essentially complying with, I believe, the definitions in the Connecticut general statutes or the building code. So this, I believe, is a consistency change to make sure that we're asking for the right, that we're consistent with what the state law and building code allow for. Is that right, Robert? Drawing a blank on this one at the moment. Let me think about that for another moment. But the, the last one is short-term rentals. And so, it depends on where you live, this is a hot topic item. For the most part, no. I can tell you, if we did, I would say we should regulate it. I maybe get one a year of someone complaining that there's a car parked on the street because they rented out for VRBO or Airbnb. Stratford, for whatever the reason, doesn't seem to either have a lot of them. I think we have three that we've looked up and found on VRBO or Airbnb. So, we're, if it was a different set of circumstances, I would recommend that we, that we regulate it, although I think there's Supreme Court ruling that just came out that says you can't, that you can't prohibit it. So, I think, and that was just, I think, last week. So, my recommendation is we, we stay as we have and we don't regulate these short-term rentals. They don't seem to be an issue today. We could always change it if something else comes up.
Also, Jay, just to kind of give a little bit of information, you know, the, the discussion about letting of rooms in a single-family home was in one section, and then there was, rooming houses was in another section. And we felt that, you know, we really, it was all kind of related to boarding, boarding houses and short-term rentals. We thought it would be best if they came together as one, but it was actually your code that kind of was dictating the number because it, your, but, which also might relate to state, state statute. But you had in a single-family home, the, because it was in there already where it said you could have one or two unrelated, and then a boarding house, which would be a business, you know, like something that would be in like a, a bigger property. Your code currently said that you could letting of rooms without, for a total of not more than five persons. So that's where the three to five came from because...
Got it.
We identified the one or two was a single-family, and a three to five was, would be a boarding house.
So then this is more of consolid, pulling similar regulations from different parts of the reg, of the book and putting them in one section.
Right, so that it would flow and make a difference between the one and two versus three to five. But it would be good if, obviously, the legal review on that, to make sure what's in your code now is permissible. It's just that the new language was just to make it more clear. And we tried, we got rid of, you know, because the letting of rooms is kind of like an old-fashioned term, so that's why we, we kind of updated it.
I had to look up the letting of rooms without table board.
Yeah, we didn't...
I didn't know what that, I didn't know what that meant.
Right.
And that's really a, a lot of the reg changes that we're doing are taking old language that most folks today don't know, at least I didn't know what it meant, and updating it to what is more understandable and more, more readable.
With all of these, this whole section, the biggest problem, the biggest danger is fires, meaning they should be sprinkled. Does any of that play into this, or is that just simply building enforcement, code enforcement?
And so, if a building is legally required to be sprinkled, it's via the building code. And I would continue to lead, lean on the code compliance of the building code and their enforcement...
And not in, not in zoning, okay?
No.
What would you want to say, that they should have current fire inspections? That you could have, you could, that they should have current fire inspections?
Well, that would come in under the building...
That still would be building code, okay.
Building and/or business...
I wanted to ask the question.
Or business licensing.
So we've removed a lot of things like that from the code where we say the wall, the retaining wall in the basement needs to be three feet thick. And I, you know, I've spent time going with all these interesting little code requirements in the zoning code with the building official, and he said, "No, that's not even the code anymore."
Okay.
So we have gone through and taken those out of a place that we really don't belong to be inserting ourselves and rely on the building code and remove the incorrect things in the zoning code.
And that's the way that you'll see that adjustment. It will say, "Should be compliant with the current building code." So that's, you, you'll see that added in quite a few places in the code. The seasonal dwelling one, I think, again, this was a kind of a, an outdated section, and we talked about it a lot with Jay, and we updated it, and you might want to give some more perspective.
What I'll just say is that this has never been updated in the time that I've been here, and I think the last time it was done before I started was about eight years prior to me being here. This has never been maintained, the list of what's seasonal, what is not seasonal. Can we even prevent someone from insulating their home to make it a year-round home legally? I don't know. Whether or not we legally can or cannot, recommendation is that we do not. You know, if someone meets the code for a structure, for it to be a year-round living, and it's already there, they should, I, my personal opinion is they should be allowed to do that. So what we have removed here essentially is mu, all the upkeep that's required in order to do that. And so, one of the things we're recommending even in section C is it requires a special permit to convert from a seasonal to a year-round. I don't even know if we need to do that. And so that'll be something that you all should read through this and think about whether or not you want to put people through this to have, to convert a seasonal to a, to a year-round dwelling. But we don't need to discuss in detail now. Wireless telecom. And so, this section has gotten really confusing for us to interpret because state, but also federal law has, has, now has a citing council, which essentially has deemed telecommunications a critical infrastructure. It is no longer just this amenity where local towns can slow something down, say, "We don't want it here, we don't want it there." Wireless communication is now deemed critical infrastructure. So the citing council is approving a lot of these things, and we are requiring a public hearing here locally when we cannot do so. And so essentially, what we are trying to do in this section is remove the requirements that I am getting threatened with lawsuits regularly saying, "I know your regulations tell you that I have to go for a public hearing, but if you make me go for one, I'm going to sue you." So that's what we're, we're trying to change that and just make it more consistent with what's the citing council is requiring in federal law. Any, did I miss anything on that, Robert?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's pretty much it. It's just that, like you said, the, if it's under the jurisdiction of the citing council, the local jurisdiction cannot hold a public hearing on it because if you say no, the citing council's going to say, "Okay, who cares?" But what you can do is you can send them a locate, a message about the location of it, and they will take that in consideration. And that's what basically is remaining from letter C on, is that, that's the internal procedure that you can do and, and supply a memo or a letter to the citing council. But you can't have a public hearing that would then say, "No." Right.
And so, perfect example of that, the cupola here, used to be covered in cellphone antennas. They came back to... They came back to want to update it, and we said, this time we're going to make you, because of your location and because of, uh, what our preferences are, you have to put that enclosed in cabinet architectural features to hide them more. And so that's why if you look up at the cupola now, you don't see it covered in these ugly antenna. We did something similar to the level building downtown. It was enclosed in an architectural feature. So this is-
Oh, good.
I don't remember. There might be. We haven't had one, I haven't had one in, 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 in a while. So this is really a cleanup of the reg- A cleanup of the regulation.
Jay, you added in other facilities. Does that mean like the rebuilding of the grid?
Where, uh, which section?
You're in, uh, we're in four point four point two three on page 29. I'm in wireless.
Under applicability?
No, at the very, at the title.
The title.
And other facilities, does that include our, the rebuilding of the grid, electric grid and all of that stuff?
Yes, um, because the citing council does also, um, have authority over-
So the same problems that-
Electric trans, not distribution lines, but they have authority over electric, um, uh, um, supply, yeah.
So this is putting all of them under the same regulations essentially, putting us in the same situation.
Yeah, I think gas, um, lines, not local distribution lines-
Gas, electric.
But large ones, they have authority over that too.
Okay.
Yep. So that would be the other type of facilities.
Okay. Why, we don't want to sue and end up with giant lawsuits? We'll-
Okay, the next one is, um, this one's a pretty big one to digest, um, and, uh, you know, we spent a lot of time talking, uh, about this as a team, um, and this was really the migration of the existing code section that you might be familiar with, that's called residence apartments. And we turned this into multifamily developments A plus because we felt that that was more of a modern and more clear, uh, discussion about what the, um, because in some cases they might be condominiums, in other words, as opposed to getting rid of the word apartment. We updated this by giving a purpose, clarifying the applicability, um, also clarifying some of the language about the special permit. Uh, but then when you get into the, um, the dimensional standards and density, um, uh, and some of that stuff, I mean, I think we, we trended very closely to what it was now, but we just modernized it.
Almost identical. There are very few changes to this section. And I'll, I'll quickly go over, over them so that when you read them at home that you know what to focus on. We always, the town always allowed for residence apartments, that's what we called them, eight, eight units or more by special permit. In the past, we had a pool of apartments that you could draw down from to use up. There was a pool that we could use, developers could use from. And once that, once all those units were accounted for in developments that were built all over town, they eventually went from 500 to 300 to 200, to zero. So no one could propose a residential development, eight units or more, anywhere in town. What we did here was say, we're going to allow them, we're going to allow the zoning commission to hear them by special permit, just the way we always have. We're just removing the, the cap that says you can no longer apply for them because there aren't more units to pull, draw from on this pool. I know it's confusing. It's essentially, we removed the cap and kept the same approval process in place that Stratford has always had, special permit. No one can get one approved without coming to you all first. The second change is on page 35, and it's the density allowed per zone. The top table is what it used to say, the bottom table is how we wanted to read now. That top table was hard for people to understand. I'm allowed three and a half units per, not even acre, that, we, we went with a builder's lot, which was 40,000 square feet. And we had developers coming in, for some reason, having a very difficult time doing the math on how many units they were allowed. So we are now proposing that it go RS1 is one unit for every 11,500 square feet, which is essentially exactly the same density that's allowed before in the table above. RS2, we are now going from, uh, four units per 40,000 square feet to one unit per 10,000. Same exact density, right, if you do the math, but easier to calculate how many units you're allowed. It's RS3, RS4, the RM1, the CA, LB, LBB, OPD. We have reduced the, we have made it, allow them to provide more density in those, those zones there. We went from 11 and a half units per 40,000 square feet to, I can't remember off the top of my head, it might be six or seven. So we've almost doubled the, the allowable density to make it, uh, more attractive. Otherwise, if we don't make it, if we don't give enough of a carrot, all they're going to do is say, well, I'm not going to use this regulation, I'm going to come in with affordable housing and propose twice as many. So we've got to, there needs to be enough incentive for the, for this regulation to attract a developer. And so that's what we went with. I highly recommend that when you're reviewing this at home, think about if you have a three-acre parcel, and then just go through and do the math. A three-acre parcel in an RS1 zone, how many units could I get on that? And then that'll help maybe give you some context as to whether or not you want to raise some of these back up or lower, and then we can go from there. I don't expect you to do that now, but, um, those were, in my opinion, the biggest changes to this section. All the other cross-throughs have to do with the elimination of that cap, which, legal opinion that's been given to us in the past, and Attorney Sullivan may have something different, is that we legally can't do that. So I think this change has to be made, in one way or another. We think that this one proposes the least amount of change because it's the same approval Any questions?
I was, uh, no. I was also just going to add real quickly, you'll see that on page 36. This is the, um, you know, this was a question that we were talking about before, about making sure that instead of being really specific, we say that it needs to be compliant with the building and fire code. So that kind of shows you an example of-
Yeah, I just, I just actually-
Yep, and I wanted to point that out. So that's kind of like how we're doing it now in the code. And then to your question earlier too, this is where the affordability requirement comes up, that's letter C on page 37. And, um, this is how we worked it out with Jay to kind of put the affordable requirement in for multifamily A plus developments. Um, and there's a, there's also then a workforce housing consideration that, um, that is tied to the state's, um, build for CT program. Um, and that's where, you know, that's how we're kind of adding incentives for both of those items. So that's all new, um, language within this section. So obviously, uh, you know, take a look at that more closely and we can tweak that and adjust that as you have time. If there's no other questions on that section, um, if we move to page 41 for the coastal-
Jay, may I ask one question? The, the workforce housing, that is exactly what we did on Lordship, right? That's the Lordship Boulevard properties?
No, they were, they were considering that.
Oh, so they never went through with the project?
They couldn't get enough information that we were eventually able to secure the details of that program.
Okay.
Uh, so no.
Okay.
And just regarding that, if someone is having trouble understanding that section, make an appointment, come in, we will sit down and look at the math, look at some maps. I'm happy to walk through what some of these changes will look like physically. So I just wanted to offer that. Next section is the coastal area management regulations.
Before you get there on page 38, uh, storage.
He's tricking us.
Wanting to see indoor bike, bicycle storage.
This is this session I was talking about with the code.
I know.
It talks about the, the four-inch cinder block that we're not, that's a building code thing. That was that section why we-
So you removed storage altogether, but-
We have bicycle storage, bicycle parking.
I know you do, but does, it does not anywhere say what's inside and what's outside. You can't have a bike out all year long, and even in Stratford, someone's going to steal it.
So, and that's something that maybe we can tweak either in this section, or we can tweak in the bicycle parking section where we say, uh, you know, it has to be covered, it has to be, uh, enclosed within a building, and so we can, we can add it in one of those sections.
I figure, otherwise I'm going to keep bringing it up on every project, saying that we have to have it.
On the coastal area management regulations, you'll see at the very top that basically this has been updated because of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act specifically. So we just went through and we compared it with the latest version of the state statute, and we had to make some changes.
What page is that? What page?
On page 41. Forty-one? Forty-one? I believe. Was there anything else in here, Jay, that was unique to, to the town, or were these, all these changes because of the state statute?
Yeah, this, our, our current section is almost identical to the state statutes from 30 or 25 years ago. So we essentially just need to update to the, all the changes that have been made in the meantime. So that, so that we're consistent with the state statutes.
Okay, the next section is on, um, uh, page 47, and this is the, uh, this is in the site development standards, and this is parking and loading. Um, obviously, this was one that we took a very careful look at, um, and there's lots of, um, lots of new adjustments for you to take a look at. We did, uh, collapse it into a table format, um, and you can very clearly see where some of the parking space requirements for different uses have been adjusted. Um, we can kind of clarify, or, or at any point Jay might be able to explain why those got adjusted. In some cases, they're, like, for instance, under commercial uses, there were, we were trying to match up the uses on the use table as much as possible with the, with these tables. So that's why in some cases there was some addition, like for instance, um, a childcare facility, we added because that was something that your regulations didn't have a parking requirement for. And we prepared a, um, a parking study for Jay and staff that, and they looked at it, um, where we compared, um, your code with some other codes to see like, you know, what, uh, what their recommendations were for those types of, um, uh, you know, spaces per square footage.
This is going to be tremendously helpful for staff. We now have a parking calculation for our contractor's storage yard. In the past, we would just had to liken it, liken it to something else and really hope that the parking count, parking was enough. Now, we've got a, an exact standard of to what they need to provide based on what the other industry standards are for these uses. So this is going to be tremendously helpful for, for staff.
The la, last thing I wanted to point out specifically is-
Can I, before you go to the, back in parking still on 48?
Mm-hmm.
You, you have in there, I, I assume that's current, nine feet by 20 feet, but we have given, given, uh, reductions in that to eight by 18 even.
And those, that was for an affordable housing project, but still-
That's the only reason they got it was because it was affordable?
No, you decided that big, give, based on the circumstances, that eight, uh, eight by 18 was appropriate.
But then later in parking, we also talk about small car parking.
The compact car.
The compact car parking.
Which kicks in when you have X amount of parking spaces.
Okay.
And you'll see that on page 52. Um, there's a, the section about compact parking spaces-
Yes.
Has been, um, it's carried forward from the existing code, but some adjustments. And then you will also see two new sections, which you will probably find interesting. One about electric vehicle charging, um, within parking lots or, and then bicycle parking, which you were just talking about. So, um, you know, this is the, the first go-around for requirements for bicycle parking. So if you want to add, um, some more requirements there for that, um, take a look at it.
I do have some notes, but we don't have to go through them right now.
And I want to add to the EV charging station, they, they're not allowed to have off-premise advertising on them. That was the main discussion, I think, that we had with the last one.
Or maybe no signage.
And, uh- Well, I think that the commission wasn't opposed to the signage. They were opposed to advertising for something down in lower Fairfield County. It wasn't that you were necessarily opposed to, like, if the EV charging station was for Saint Mark, Saint James, and they want to put a charging station that has a monitor that-
Or had it been smaller.
Here's our calendar of events, you know?
These were like three-foot sign, I mean, they were big signs. You definitely could have seen them two and a half, two blocks away. If it was something that was personalized, that, like a kiosk would have, we said, do it, but they did not want that. It was their revenue stream.
If we limit it, if we, if we prohibit off-premise advertising, it's not going to be a problem. No one's going to build one. They're not going to build it. There's only money in advertising for a million different things.
Yes.
If they can only do it for their property, no, there's, no one's going to do it. Or I should say, very few places are going to do it.
So that should be, um, you should have some fun reading that section. Um, and then the last section that's substantially, um-
In parking or any lands, any of the landscaping that we have in here, if you could go back and review it and change tree, da-da-da, or add in native?
Where, where mentions landscaping, add the word native. We want native landscaping.
Native landscaping.
Yeah.
Native trees, native shrubs, native da-da-da. That's part of our coastal commitment.
Okay, so then the, uh, the next section is, um, in this substantially adjusted is, starts on page 57, and this is the new, this is the adjusted sign code. This section has a lot of adjustment, um, but I think the basic requirements are still about the same.
Robert, can I, can I interrupt one second right before you start this on page 56? Jay, can we add in there utility trash screening and rooftop mechanical screening into this previous section? Since it comes up on every single project, we argue-
So under which section, mission? Six point eight, point 12, there's item one, two, and three, which ends on page 56. You're saying add a four?
Uh, somewhere in, yeah, I think this is the right section. In, within this section somewhere.
Rooftop mechanical screening?
Rooftop mechanical screening and utility trash screening.
Okay.
That comes up on-
Trash enclosure, dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, and perimeter fencing, if, if you can do that. But those are the three things that we spend needless hours-
Who's we?
The whole committee. Every project that comes before us, we have to discuss-
I'm sure it would end up in this section, but we'll find a, a section for that.
Somewhere. It would end up, we wouldn't have to discuss that every, every time.
Dumpster enclosure, rooftop screening, and, did I hear a third one?
Um, fencing.
We have our own fence section.
Okay.
Okay. We'll find the right place to, to shoot one of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Robert, what you were saying about the signs?
Huh? We're losing, Lenny.
This is the very last one that we can spend one minute on if you have a moment. Essentially, our sign regulations don't cover, don't cover enough, and so our, uh, Robert's legal team, uh, did a big review of the sign regulations.
It's a normal sign, uh, just regular signage.
Regular signage, uh, what we allow, what we can regulate, and so much of these updates are legal updates from what I am, if I'm-
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we just put it, like, again, there's a lot, there's a lot of definitions added because the sign code was, your existing sign code was lacking definitions. Um, and we, and obviously with signage, you want to make it as clear as possible. Um, and then also, we wanted to put it in a more modern flow, where you kind of talk about the purposes, the type of signs, and then you say what's prohibited, what is allowed temporary, and what is allowed permanent. Um, and so you'll see that all of the, when you get to the permanent signs, there's tables now that kind of make it more easy for the, uh, the, the reader to kind of understand what's permitted, but you'll see that there's not a lot of adjustments to the size requirements or the type of sign, uh, because that's pretty much staying the same, but it's really just making it more user-friendly.
So what I'll say is now that we've completed the overview of this section, um, next, so we, next steps for the commission.
Um, can I just say one thing?
Absolutely.
I'll- I'll, I'll just, I just wanted to say real quickly, the sections that we, the last section that we did not talk about, which starts on page seventy-two, these are completely brand-new sections, okay? So that this, you really just need to read them so that you become familiar with them. But one of them is the use table, which we've talked about. And the use table, it's, it's just combining everything that you had before. And I know when we get to more detailed reviews with you, we'll want to go, we can go through that more carefully. But we up, we added something about beekeeping, which it seems kind of minor, but that's something for you to consider. We adjusted or added stuff about temporary uses. And then the last four are, are completely new, the renewable energy structures. This is for things like wind, solar, and EV charging. Mechanical equipment setbacks, this probably goes into what you just talked about, Mr. Chairman, about the rooftop screening and stuff like that. So you'll want to look at that. Outdoor lighting is also a completely new section, and this follows like the dark skies initiative that's coming in from the state and also a resident that's interested in it. And then lastly, the notification procedures that your code currently doesn't have, that's been added. So we won't go through them anymore, but that's just to let you know that these are the completely new sections, and you'll, you'll find them, um, interesting to review. Okay?
So like I said, I'll just add, any comments that you have, you can send them to me. What I would recommend is maybe we wait to send bulk comments until we have our workshop on September eleventh. You can hear what the constituents would like or their preferences, and then that may shape what you want that we, for us to talk about at our next meeting. And we have a plan for that, like we were talking about the sticky board or the, the general comment board next to our targeted table discussion.
You're talking about a public workshop?
Yeah.
Are you talking about for the, yeah, I think, and, uh, yeah, definitely. I mean, and I think just to give you, because you also asked about this at the very beginning. I think, um, you know, we're still going to work with Jay now that we had this meeting with you tonight. Uh, we will, you know, the September eleventh is the date for the, you know, the community workshop, which we would like all of you to, obviously, to attend. And I think at that particular one, we'll, we'll, we'll basically make it an information sharing activity, our, our option, where we will have the code available for people to like take a look at. But then we'll probably have some activities on some specific questions. Or it could just be like where somebody could post a note like you're saying. So it'll be kind of, um, similar to the very first one, where it will be kind of an, oh, you know, we'll be there to answer questions and get people familiar with the new code. Um, and then find out what their specific questions might be, um, and then point them in the right direction.
For the, for the, um,
What was this?
Uh, Supremo's, uh, Armin.
Oh, you mean it was an application. So it was the reactive planning rather than proactive.
So I will be sending out more updates. I know folks got to go. The only other item we have on the agenda is to approve the minutes for a special meeting.
I need a, Deborah? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank everybody. Appreciate the time. Motion to adjourn, second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for your efforts tonight.
We're right at, thank you, thank you.